Good afternoon everyone, the regular session of this anggonya palalawigan is called to order. Please stand for the prayer to be led by Honorable Lope E. Dorado Jr. And after the prayer, please remain standing for the singing of the Philippine national anthem and the hymn no San Ortehanan.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Lord God, as we commence this session of the Sanggonya Panlalawigan, we humbly ask for your divine presence and guidance. We acknowledge your infinite wisdom and seek your direction in the matters set before us. Grant us the courage to pursue justice, uphold truth, and promote the common good. May our discussions be characterized by respect, patience, and humility as we engage in fruitful dialogue. Help us to discern the needs of our province and to envision a brighter future for our people. Bless us with unity and cooperation that we may work harmoniously towards the betterment of our society. We offer these legislative proceedings to you, trusting in your unfailing love. In your holy name, we pray, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Mga kababayan, ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magigil, kerosas sira halat, aram na puso sa dipikoy kuay. Luwak ang pinira, uyag ka ng mahiti, sa manurupi, ikapasi sigil. Sanagadap, dugo sa sikoy, sanali kong pagkao, ay hila damdul la kawis sa pagkaya minamahal. Apusda, kawatuyka, dun kay naran kini, kampe duwi na karo ngayda, pamayda matitini. Luwak na palaw ng kwalha, bigbat singka, uengha bigsa bibiko. Aming bigaya na par, taywa ngapi, alpa ma kay ng, kahil sa'yo. Kitaan mga nortihanon, pasantun ay mga iba paunon. Tugup kita sing pagkao, sankanan jus gaon. Pasarayu, pagnutuk kita, kabubuwas unkat panta. Ang mayrooy, madaw nganon, sa kabulok, birin ang padahon. Mga tunin kita ni sumuroy, kung sayo nga kunang mayrooy. Napuukita sa kalamasan, kung hingyapan kaos nagal. Pasarayu, pagutuk kita, kabubuwas unkat panta. Ang mayrooy, madaw nganon, sa kahulog birin ang padahon. Ang mayrooy, madaw nganon, sa kahulog birin ang padahon. Ang mayrooy, madaw nganon, sa kahulog birin ang padahon.
Thank you, please take your respective seats. As the secretary kindly call the members of this august body for purpose of determining quorum.
Present.
Honorable Dr. I. C. D.
Present.
Honorable Attorney General N. S. P.
Present.
Honorable Lieutenant C. L. S.
Present.
Honorable Agent A. S. N. Uspa.
Present.
Honorable Ong Najab Bianca Nicolet L.
Honorable Ong Chuan Emil Nicolas II B.
Honorable Miranda Gerardo Gerard A.
Honorable Silvano Gina O.
Honorable Singzon Victoria II M.
Present.
Honorable Ui Florian D. There are twelve members who are present in today's session, Mr. Chair, and that includes the Presiding Officer.
With the presence of twelve members including the Presiding Officer of this august body, we have a quorum in today's regular session. Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pleasant afternoon to our Presiding Chair, the Honorable Attorney Clarence Baristo Dato. My esteemed members, fellow members of this august body, the secretary, and all the staff. Again, pleasant good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, we now go directly to the next item in order business item number six. Calendar business under item is letter A. We have two proposed ordinances scheduled under the second reading. Parliamentary status is for sponsorship speech be followed by interpolation, debate, and amendment. Mr. Chairman, in the order of the ordinances scheduled for second reading, is under item number one is the proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Lope E. Dorado Jr. Entitled an ordinance prescribing the immediate planning and implementation of comprehensive drainage system by all local government units in the province of Northern Samar to address flooding, public health, public health issues, and climate induced hazard. Mr. Chairman, to deliver his sponsorship speech, kindly please recognize the proponent of the said ordinance as read by this humble presentation, the Honorable Lope E. Dorado Jr.
Honorable Lope E. Dorado Jr. is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Majority Leader. Honorable Presiding Officer, my esteemed colleagues in this august body, ladies and gentlemen. my esteemed colleagues in this august body, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I rise today to sponsor a measure that is both timely and vital to the sustainable development and safety of our province an ordinance prescribing the immediate preparation of the comprehensive drainage system plan by all LGOs in the province of Northern Samar. This proposed ordinance is more than a technical requirement. It is a proactive response to the realities we face today. Year after year, we witness the growing threats of flooding, waterborne diseases, and climate-induced hazards that continuously affect our communities, destroyed properties, and endangered lives. The truth is, many of our municipalities still lack a well-designed drainage and storm management system that can cope with the increasing intensity of rainfall and the changing landscape brought by urbanization and climate change. We can no longer afford to be reactive, constructing drainage system only after disaster strike. What we need now is a comprehensive, science-based, and forward-looking drainage system plan that will serve as the foundation for future infrastructure investments. This plan will ensure that every LGO, regardless of size or income, will have a clear blueprint to guide the proper design, location, and construction of drainage facilities fully aligned with the environmental and engineering standards. Moreover, this initiative aims to protect public health. For drainage contributes to stagnant water which becomes a breeding ground for mosquitoes carrying dinghy and other diseases. Proper planning and engineering solutions are not only about preventing floods. They are also about saving lives and improving the overall well-being of our people. This ordinance empowers our local government units to take the lead in planning with the support and technical guidance of Provincial Engineering Office, the Provincial Planning and Development Office, and concerned national agencies such as the DPWH and DENR. Through this measure, we envision a coordinated provincial drainage master plan where every municipality's system complements each other, creating a province that is resilient, livable, and climate-adapted. My dear colleagues, this ordinance is not just an infrastructure initiative. It is an investment in the safety, health, and future resilience of Northern Samar. By mandating all LGOs to prepare their drainage system plans, now we are laying a groundwork for the province that is ready to withstand the challenges of tomorrow. Let us stand united in this endeavor for when we plan today, we protect the next generation. With that, I respectfully urge the approval of this ordinance and the support of this honorable body in making this vision a reality. Maraming salamat, and may we continue to build resilience, good governance. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Lope E. Dorado Jr.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Considering the importance and technical nature of the proposed ordinance and to allow my esteemed colleagues ample time to review and study provisions, I respectfully move that the period of interpolations, amendments, and debates be scheduled in our next regular session. I soo Mr. Chair.
I second.
With that motion duly seconded, the period for interpolation, debate, and/or possible amendments to the proposed ordinance be calendared in our next regular session. Before, I just want to put it on record that our colleague civil engineer by profession, this initiative... At the time you assumed, I heard it from you that you want this proposal.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So considering the timeline, it's not because of what's happening now, but even before, you already mentioned about this initiative with important local ordinance. So calendar for the next regular session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Lope E. Dorado Jr. So, as the secretary kindly take note of that. The interpellation, parade for interpolation will be in our next regular session. Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, another ordinance is scheduled under the Second Reading. Again, for interpolation, debate, and amendment, I am preparing to ordinance establishing a clearance requirement for a property survey and for other purposes. Kindly please recognize the proponent of the said ordinance, the Honorable Don El Abalon, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Don El Abalon is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This representation is now ready for interpolation and any proposed amendment from our colleagues in this Sanggulang Panlalawigan, Mr. Chair. Well, ready.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going over, Mr. Chairman, to the proposed ordinance establishing a clearance requirement for property survey and for other purposes, I find no conflicting conflicting proposal of the purposes of this ordinance. However, Mr. Chairman, just a few or one clarificatory manifestations. Mr. Chairman, under the Local Government Code of 1991, otherwise as Republic Act 7260, the duties and functions of municipal assessor, among others, are responsible for discovery, classification, appraisal, and assessment of all real properties within the local government unit's jurisdiction for taxation purposes. Key functions are property assessment, tax mapping system, conducting of frequent physical service issued a declaration, certifications, processing, subvention, or consolidation of lands. My clarificatory question, Mr. Chairman, is that considering that the local government code has already provided and defined key functions and duties of the municipal assessor, this clearance requirement for property survey before a property can be surveyed, is this, may I know from the proponent, is this an additional function already provided in the local government code? Or we believe that it's already inherent or part of the functions of the municipal assessor?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The local government code enumerates the duties and functions of the local assessor. And at the end of the enumeration, it says, "As may be performed." "As may perform additional such other duties and functions as may be prescribed by law or ordinance." So it is in this context, Mr. Chair, that we are empowering the assessor to perform additional function by authorizing the assessor to determine whether a survey application pertains to a particular property where the applicant has an interest. And in the absence of that interest, then the assessor may decline granting that particular clearance, Mr. Chair. In fact, Section 472 of the Local Government Code, the last item there, it says, "Exercise such other powers and perform such other duties and functions as may be prescribed by law or ordinance." And this particular ordinance now prescribes additional duties and functions to the assessor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for, in behalf of this representation, I am fully convinced with the elucidation or clear presentation of our dear colleague, the Honorable Abalon, Mr. Chairman. And with this, Mr. Chairman, and other members would like to be recognized. First, yes, we have the Honorable Lucero, Honorable Dorado, to be followed by the Honorable Leonida Laudenio. I stand to be corrected, Mr. Chairman, again. In order is the Honorable Dorado, to be followed by the Honorable Leonida Laudenio.
Honorable Lope E. Dorado Jr. is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is only a clarification to the proponent of this ordinance. So I'm going to, I'm asking who shall issue the clearance? The barangay, the municipal, provincial general, or the provincial assessor?
Mr. Chair, for the convenience of everyone, particularly the landowners or anyone who has a vested interest in the property, that he will not be shuttling from one office to another, we deemed that this representation deemed it more appropriate to have the municipal assessor issue the appropriate clearance so that it's in the same locality where the property is situated.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, a follow-up question, if I may. What are the specific documents required to obtain the clearance?
The proposed ordinance, Mr. Chair, has indicated in general terms, the requirement for the application of the clearance. There is going to be a form, a uniform standard format that will be used all over the province and that will be prepared by the provincial assessor where the necessary details of the property and the interest of the person seeking the clearance will be indicated. And the implementing rules that will be issued by the provincial assessor will indicate what are the specific properties. But in the proposed ordinance, Mr. Chair, any document that will evidence the interest of the applicant over the property. So it may be, it may be a deed of sale, it may be a deed of mortgage, or it may be an old document, any form of document that will show that that particular applicant has an interest over the property. But then the provincial assessor is given a leeway as to identify other documents that may be necessary, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If may I add, in Section Six, in the proposed Section Six, Evidence of Interest, well, the first document is a proof of ownership. Then the second is a recorded contract of sale or option to purchase with terms and expiration date, a mortgage or lien, an assignment, a lease agreement, or other legally recognized incumbents creating an interest in the property, an approved special assessment, benefit agreement, or other instrument, or any other instrument recognized by the provincial or municipal assessor's office as establishing vested or real interest.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A follow-up question, how long is the validity period of such clearance?
The proposed ordinance, Mr. Chair, indicated a validity period of one year. So if the clearance is secured today, it will have a validity of up to the same date next year, but it may also be renewed for another year.
Thank you, and my last question, Mr. Chair. Will this apply only to private land surveys or also the government-initiated projects?
We made an exception, Mr. Chair, to government-initiated surveys, especially if it involves a government project because such situation may not necessarily require any clearance anymore, Mr. Chair. What happened, why this representation believed that clearance is necessary before any survey can be conducted? It's usually an individual, a private person, for whatever reason, will have a particular piece of property surveyed, claiming ownership, and then use that particular survey plan in applying with other government agencies to create some right for himself. But on the part of the government, Mr. Chair, there is no need for that for one reason, a simple reason. We cannot construct any project, the government cannot construct any project unless it is government property. So the implementing office on the part of the government will first see to it that the property is already transferred to the government and there may be existing surveys already for that particular property.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I am very satisfied with the explanation of the proponent, and thank you very much, Abby and Don.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Lope E. Dorado Jr. Honorable Leonida Pilaudenio is certified.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. This is not, shall we say, a question to the proponent, but a form of inquiry about the clearance.
Inquiry is a question.
But regarding the survey clearance to be issued by the municipal assessor, because for my own experience, I went to the provincial assessor office. How could I seek survey, to survey my lot? What will be the process? And according to the provincial office, it must be the DENR or in the provincial office or a private surveyor. Because one requirement of securing your title or tax declaration at that of your property is the survey. So I am very much thankful that Board Member Abalon has this ordinance so that our municipal assessor has no reason. has no reason para magisusinig ang mga sorbi clearance because we have that ordinance. Because as far as I know, there are some assessors that will not accept this function because as far as Board Member Avalon said a while ago, this is an additional work for them. So for this, BM, the sorbi clearance is not just to secure the ownership of such individual, but also to give the jurisdiction of the assessor, kay daniyan mga assessor direxili nangininano. But because of this ordinance, wala na sira rason na direxira maghatag clearance and then at that, the municipal assessor and their employees mapipiritan pagkatupag sorbisining ang mga tuna. Kay there are cases, as far as I know, that the municipal assessor labiho ulang sira mga tao, direnagkakato. On my own experience, sa amo, sa mapanas, direkamina kakaarod dahil simpagpa sorbi kay kulang tao. So for this ordinance, mapipiritan ang mga municipal assessor nga magadapsidi, nga matatagan ang atin mga individual, the private individuals, para makatagyaon sa mga tuna, because mostly, diba? Ano't mga tuna, dire pa ato, sering pa ni Board Member Big Mac Madir, kay di man imutuna, diba? One of our chat, that is the reason. Because, the reason is, maluya ang ato padalagan nga mahikat tuna sa ato, ano't mga pinalit na tuna. So because of this ordinance, mapipiritan ano't mga municipal assessor to act and it will help much sa mga private individual to secure, to establish the ownership of their property. It is just, ano, it is just an addition.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if me, if I may, I, I, I just would like, uh, nais ko lang pong liwanagin na hindi po natin binibigyan ng responsibilidad ang ating mga municipal assessors, na sila po 'yung magkonduktong ng sorbi. Uh, yun pa din ang mangyayari, ang magsosorbi pa din, 'yung geodetic engineer, whether geodetic engineer ng LGO, kumeron, or geodetic engineer ng D E N R, or ju- or private na geodetic engineer. Ang kapangyarihan at obligasyon lamang po na iniaatas natin sa ating mga municipal assessors ay ang pagbibigay ng kapahintulutan upang magkonduktong ng isang sorbi ang isang geodetic engineer doon sa pag, sa lupa na pag-aari ng applicant ng clearance.
Ah, okay.
Sila pa din po. And then, um, during the committee hearing po, nung nagkan- nagkonduk- nagsagawa po tayo ng, uh, pagbinig sa Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability, ini-inanyayahan po natin 'yung mga municipal assessors. Sa mga nagatend po, halos lahat, uh, sumang ayon po na magkaroon sila ng ganitong, uh, kapangyarihan, ganitong responsibilidad. Dahil nga sa mga nangyayari minsan, na may pumupunta na lang sa kanilang tanggapan, may dalada na ng sorbi at gustong pagawan ng tax declaration. Nagkakaroon po ng pagkakaguluhan 'yung mga tax declaration. Uh, kaya, bago magsagawa ng sorbi, kukuha mo na ng clearance 'yung applicant doon sa municipal assessor at pag nabigyan na ng clearance 'yung municipal assessor, ng municipal assessor 'yung applicant, and doon na 'yung pangalan kung sino 'yung kinukuha niyang geodetic engineer, saka na sila magsasagawa ng sorbi. At doon, magkakaliwanag na 'yung tao na nagpapasorbi ay mayroong kaukulang karapatan doon sa lupa na pinasorsorbi.
Okay, thank you, BM Don. Another inquiry is, kung magpupunta doon 'yung mga mag-aapply, the applicants, uh, sabihin sa municipal assessor, "Magpapasorbi ako sa ganitong barangay", pwede ba imbitahan? Pwede municipal assessor invite san mga, mga giutan ba, ang mga tagyaon? So that during the sorbi, it is not only the applicant nga adto, but also ang mga nadadabihan niya mga tao?
Actually, uh, Mr. Chair, actually, 'yan po ang isasalayunin na minsan kasi 'yung nagpapasorbi ay isinasagawa 'yung pagsorsorbi ng patagok, na hindi nalalaman o mga kapitbahay, kapitlupa. So parang sikreto na pagpapasorbi, pero ito ngayon, dahil kukuha siya ng clearance, malalaman ngayon 'yung municipal assessor kung saan ito gagawin na sorbi. Si municipal assessor mismo ang mag- magbibigay ng, ng notisia sa mga adjoining owners, sa mga neighbors, pati doon sa barangay official, na ito, si Board Member Laudenio ay magpapagawa ng, magpapasagawa ng sorbi doon sa napun- napun- naputad.
Naputad. Hahaha. Okay, specific, okay. So, so I am very much thankful for this, Board Member, kasi tama 'yun, there are applicants that pumupunta na lang sa kanilang, ano, mga pinasorsorbi na lupa without even giving notice to the adjoining, ano, mga, ang awas at mga linderos. So for this, the municipal assessor will be given that sabihin natin na tagan sira san karakapangyarihan nga dapat liwat i-invite ang mga kanira, mga gigitan, mga tagyaon sa mga gigitan. So for this, that is only my, ano, parang query lang, pangutan na lang ah, tagan man sin kapasidad, tagan man sin rights ang mga heripid. Kay daniyan liwat, di na tinatagan ang mga heripids sin kanira rights para during the sorbi, dapat add to sirangatanan. Again, thank you.
Tama po 'yan, uh, Mr. Chair, na kailangan. Actually, 'yun na dapat sana ang requirement sa lahat na sorbi, with or without this ordinance, dapat 'yun sana ang sorbi, responsibility 'yan ng geodetic engineer na sabihan 'yung mga adjoining neighbors, uh, na magka- they're going to conduct a sorbi. But, uh, more often than not, nakakalimutan 'yan, si diretso, nakaagad sila dun sa pagsorsorbi, so walang ibang tao doon. Kaya 'yun minsan ang nagiging dahilan ng pagkakaroon ng kaguluhan doon sa mga boundary ng magkalapit na mga lupa. Now, dagdagan ko lang, uh, hindi ko alam kung kasama to sa gustong itanong sanan ni Board Member Laudenio, pero sa unang pahayag niya kanina, parang nakita ko to doon. So, ano ang mangyayari kung halimbawa, ayaw magbigay ng clearance ni municipal assessor? Kasi 'yung nag-aapply, hindi kasundok ni municipal assessor, ano ang mangyayari? Una, kung halimbawa i-deny ni municipal assessor 'yung clearance, pwede iakyat dito sa provincial assessor's office. So si provincial assessor ngayon ang mag- magbibigay ng clearance. Now, kung hindi naman inaksunan ni municipal assessor, hinayaan lang na nakapinding doon sa tanggapan niya 'yung application, after fifteen days, magiging deemed approved po 'yung clearance.
Ah, okay. So it is, uh, very nice, ano, kwan kay daniyan mga munusipyo, diba? Tama 'yun ni Board Member, nga iakyat dito sa provincial assessor, kay di di naman sa provincial assessor, wala kikilingan. So thank you, Board Member. That's all.
Thank you, Board Member Laudenio.
Thank you, Honorable Leonida Pilaudenio. Uh, Honorable Janicia Dexter, legalities recognized. Parang si Honorable Laudenio is implying something.
Hahaha. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Uh, just a short question to the proponent, uh, what will be the, uh, impact or the effect of the sorbi in relation to the, uh, ecological system? Like, 'yung mayroong mga endangered species, protected habitats? Is there any, uh, uh, is, this, is this, uh, particular issue mentioned in the ordinance?
Uh, hindi po 'yan nabanggit, uh, Mr. Chair, sa atin pong panukala. Kasi ang pinagtuunan po natin dito ng pansin ay 'yung pag-aari ng lupa. Now, kung halimbawa 'yan ay inding- mayron mga endangered species, um, parang nasasaklaw po 'yan ng D E N R at ma- malamang sa hindi ay, 'yung lupain na 'yan po ay pag-aari ng panghalaan. It, it could be a timberland, it could be a forest, it could, it could be something else, but it definitely could be a public land. Uh, now, um, pwede din naman po idagdag doon sa magiging implementing rules.
Yes.
Na kaya lang, ang ginagawa kasu- po natin, nung binubuo natin, 'yung binabalangkas natin 'yung panukala, ay nasa isip po natin, ay is updoing business pa din po, na hindi po mahihirapan sa pagkuha ng clearance 'yung atin pong mga kababayan. Um, ginagdagan natin ng requirement, 'yung papapasorbi, kailangan ko mo ng clearance. So inisip po natin, na kailangan po ay mapadali din po 'yung pagkuha ng clearance. Kasi kung hihingi pa din sila ng clearance sa D E N R bago magpasorbi, ay magkakaroon po ng complication. Now, kung ang ipapasorbi po ng isang applicant ay public land, kailangan po niyang magpakita ng kaukulang katibayan na mayroon siyang karapatan doon sa.
Proper documentation.
So without that particular proof of, uh, interest doon sa area ni ipapasorbi, ay hindi po siya mabibigyan ng clearance.
Uh, I understand with the explanation of the proponent, uh, na simply, kinoconsider din natin 'yung, uh, 'yung, parang mapabilis 'yung approval ng, ng, uh, of the, uh, permit. Now, my second question, Mr. Chair, is, for example, there is, uh, development, like, uh, magtayo ng mall, then mag- ano, mag- mag- ano ng permit for sorbi, uh, is the, uh, post, uh, development, uh, sorbi included? Na after ng mag-develop nung developer, siguro kailangan din ma-assess kung ano 'yung epekto sa environment sa, ng development na ginawa?
Ang, ang tingin ko dyan, Mr. Chair, kasi definitely prior to the development, uh, magpapasorbi 'yun, so kukuha ng clearance. Pag naestablish na na 'yung perimeter na 'yun ay pag-aari niya or mayroon siyang kaukulang karapatan sa lupain na 'yun, tapos 'yung post-development sorbi na gagawin, eh, nandun din 'yan sa loob ng lupain na previously surveyed in his name. So, 'yung, 'yung post-development naman na 'yan, magkakaroon din naman ng kaukulang assessment from the assessor's office.
So it is the obligation of the, the owner of the property?
Yes, Mr. Chair, kasama pa din po 'yan.
That is, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Unless, kung, kung halimbawa, nauna na 'yung sorbi na pinauna, tapos isama na doon, kaagad niya 'yung post-development sorbi, so hindi niya, niya kailangan kumuha ng panibagong clearance pag magsasagawa na ng post-development sorbi.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, this presentation is delighted with the, the explanation of the sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, thank you, Honorable Janicia Dexter, legalit. Honorable Neil, yes, Hernandez is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for clarification, uh, sponsor, what happen if the, uh, tama ba 'yung, 'yung application for the sorbi will approve from the D E N R? Only the D E N R will approve?
Uh, Mr. Chair, 'yung authority to sorbi, 'yun ang ineissue ng D E N R.
Yes.
Kasi kailangan 'yun para sa approval ng sorbi plan by the D E N R mismo sa regional office.
Yes, so. So what happen if the D E N R accept the old, uh, tax declaration and we not, uh, lessen or parang sundin ang ating ordinance? Anong mangyayari?
Mayroon pong kaukulang parusa doon sa geodetic engineer at sa mayari ng, at sa doon sa nagpasorbi, kung sakaling magtuloy sila sa pagsorsorbi na walang kaukulang clearance mula sa municipal assessor.
Kasi, uh, beside my, uh, experience, mayroon mga, I questioned this in our public hearing, mayroon mga owners na nagsasubmit, ano, nagsasubmit ng mga old tax declaration and then the D E N R, kung mayroon kang kaibigan, mayroon kang kakilala, and then madali, kahit luma 'yung ibibigay na tax declaration, the application for the sorbi is in a month or three months will approve. So sana, hopefully, na 'yung mga geodetic engineer, na tama sinabi mo, dapat, uh, may parusa kung hindi sila sumunod, na sila mismo, 'yung mga geodetic engineer natin, kasi pag nandoon na sa region, 'yung application, parang malabo na mayroon pa tayong mahahabol doon sa D E N R, diba? So dito pa lang sa mga geodetic engineer na hindi sumusunod sa ating ordinance sa na ngayon, na tama 'yun, 'yung iba kasi, kahit wala 'yung mga katabi or ka mga kaibigan mo dyan sa owner, naaaprobahan, and then nakukuha nila 'yung, uh, sorbi plan with approved. So thank you, that's all, uh, Don Avalon.
Mr. Chair, tama po 'yan, uh, mayroon pong mga pangyayaring ganon na dahil may mga kalapit doon sa loob ng isang ahensya, ay napagbibigyan, nakakapagpasagawa ng sorbi at naibabato sa region at naaaprobahan 'yung sorbi. 'Yan po ay dahil wala pa po tayo ng ordinance, ngayon kung mayroon na po, um, kahit 'yung mga taga D E N R naman siguro dito, ay sila din mismo mag, uh, susunod at magpapa- isasama nila sa pagpapatupad. Now, kung halimbawa, mayroon din pong nakapagpasorbi na hindi dumaan sa ating municipal assessor, maliban po doon sa karampatang parusa na isinas- ginagawad po ng ating panukala, babalik at babalik din po 'yan doon sa municipal assessor dahil magpapagawa po ng tax declaration. At 'yan po ang magiging dahilan ng ating municipal assessor para hindi po i-process 'yung kanyang application dahil 'yung sorbi na ginagamit niya ay wala pong kaukulang clearance mula sa municipal assessor.
Thank you. And again, I would like to remind the, uh, last session that this presentation and all the members of present last session, that all of us is the co-sponsor if the good gentleman yield.
I, I, I understand, Mr. Chair, that I already yielded to the original proposal of Board Member Hernandez.
Thank you, Honorable Neil Is Hernandez. Any member still want to interplay or some questions? Uh, yes, Honorable Nadia Bianca Nicolet Elong.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Honorable Board Member, thank you for the initiative of protecting the lot owners through this ordinance. Just a point of clarification, sir, that, um, is there a timeframe or lead time that the municipal assessor? that the municipal assessor's office must, uh, provide the clearance upon application?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the, the ordinance indicated fifteen working days upon completion or upon receipt of the stamped plan. Uh, the, uh, no... There is, there is a period within which to, to process and it's fifteen days, Mr. Chair. As I, I mentioned earlier, after the lapse of fifteen days and the municipal assessor has not acted on the application, then it becomes deemed approved.
So, if there is no clearance within fifteen days, it is deemed...
The, the stamped copy of the applicant, the...
Received.
His application with the stamped, uh, received is deemed to be declared already.
Okay. And in the event of non-approval or disapproval, there's also a corresponding document that...
Uh, if the applicant received a notice from the municipal assessor that his application is denied or disapproved by the municipal assessor, then that, that document showing the denial or the disapproval can be elevated to the provincial assessor for reconsideration.
Okay. Last, sir, um, is a tax declaration a possible document to present in applying for a clearance?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Any, any document that will show an interest on the part of the applicant.
So, a mere tax declaration?
Yes, a mere tax declaration, um, in, in his name or in... On the, that is the, that is the point here, Mr. Chair. As, as mentioned also by Board Member Hernandez earlier, the old tax declaration. The municipal assessor cannot determine, can, can check his records whether that old tax declaration has already been canceled. So, if it has already been canceled, then the new tax declaration will prevail over the old tax declaration.
Thank you, Honorable Board Member.
Thank you, thank you, Board Member Elong. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Nadia Bianca Nicolet Elong. Uh, before ano, uh, some clarifications to the proponent. First, uh, about the applicant, uh, the definition is he must have real or vested interest in the property to be surveyed. For this purpose, the term person may include leses, vendors, retro, mortgages, all those options, and other government entities and instrumentalities with a legal mandate over the property. Do, do you have in mind other, uh... per, kumbaga, other terms that can be... Though the enumeration is not, ano, this is just among others. Kumbaga, but the, uh, definition of applicant, what is controlling really is uh, you have a real, must have a real or vested interest in the property to be surveyed. Kailan naman, kung mayroon pa tayong maisip na, usually kasi, what usually catches the, um... the eye, usually even the enumeration is not exclusive. Uh, may ba, kung mayroon pa tayong terms na naisip na usually those persons who have best, real or vested interest in the property to be surveyed. That's one, but, uh, ano lang naman 'yan, just a suggestion. Um, the other one, ang gusto ko lang i-ano, na sa proponent, applicants must have a relation, uh, the applicant's relationship to the property and also one of the requirements, aside from that, evidence of interest in the property. So, it's not enough that you allege your relationship to the property. You must also have an evidence of interest in the property.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So, uh, hindi 'yan, uh, kumbaga, and/or, kumbaga, you should allege your relationship to the property, at the same time you must show proof of evidence of interest in the property.
Yes, Mr. Chair. As, uh, as the legal maxim would say, he who alleges must prove. So, if a person is claiming to be the, to be the owner or somehow has an interest over the property, then he must not only allege it, but he has also to prove it by any supporting document that would be defined by the provincial assessor's office in the implementing rules.
Uh, and also, thank you, thank you for that, uh, clarification. I, ano ko lang, 'yung review and determination, both sa level of municipal assessor and sa appeals, no, para for clarity. Pag sa level of municipal assessor, the municipal assessor shall approve for...
Mr. Chair, before that, uh, I just would like to correct my earlier statement that I said fifteen days.
Yes.
It's just five days.
Five days?
Five days from receipt of the application.
Yes, it's, 'yun lang 'yung naano ko, kasi...
The fifteen days is the post-sorby report.
Post-sorby report and the appeal also. Kasi failure to resolve the appeal within, uh, uh, fifteen days, fifteen working days, in case the provincial assessor fails to resolve the same within that period, the appeal is deemed, uh, kumbaga, denied sa taas 'yan. So, thank you, thank you for that, ano, kasi there's that post-survey, uh, reporting and compliance ni, ni sorbyon, that is fifteen days. And the review and determination, yeah, that's correct, that's five days. Thank you for clarifying. And lastly, the... Siguro i-ano talan, iklara, clearance is different from the survey itself. Kasi diba, clearance is one year validity. If you want exercise that your, your right to, uh, magpakandak ng survey within that, uh, one year, it's on, it's the clearance, but the validity of the survey itself, hindi 'yan, ano, kumbaga, magkaiba. Uh, kasi baka, 'yung maano 'yung clearance and survey. Since up to the applicant, whether, sa paggamit niya ng survey, usually sa, ano, kasi 'yan eh, it's either sa bentahan or sa, sa case ng partition. So, tama ako, no, uh, clearance is for one year, maybe extended for another six months for justifiable cost. Pag ano na, wala ka na, kukuha ka na ulit ng clearance, magbabayad ulit. Total amount of two, five, no, so... Just as for, ano, uh, for confirmation, no. And, ah, mayroon pa pala ko, and finally, 'yung unjustified denial of or refusal to act on any application on the part of the municipal assessor or by any government personnel uh, shall constitute a violation of this ordinance. So, wala naman tayong inaano, ano, dito, no? Uh, magco-complement naman to, dun sa period, pag failure to, ano, number of days, deemed approved. But even, uh, wala pa 'yung period na 'yan, gumind justify denial or refusal to act. And you mentioned also about the ease of doing business act, no, so... Complementarily naman lahat, um, uh, these provisions. Parang inaano ko lang ba, and just somewhat, ano, reconciling the, ano, 'yung apparent, but I know this, that, that really a real, ano, uh, contradiction or conflict. Sa unjustified denial, refusal to act, sa application, then failure to act sa five days is deemed, deemed approved naman 'yan. And of course, you have also some provisions in the ease of doing business that you have to act on a matter being requested from your office. So, with that, no, uh, any... Ayes, uh, Honorable Nadia Bianca Nicolet Elong is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It just came across my mind in connection with Mr. Chair's feedback on the how an app proves interest or ownership. Is how do we treat, um, those who claim ownership by virtue of inheritance and the original owner has deceased? And the transfer of the title has not been registered and he claims ownership by mere inheritance?
Uh, Mr. Chair, inheritance is by operation of law. So, if the descendant, uh, passed away, the original owner, the descendant, then his heirs would automatically become owners. Um, on, on my humble opinion, the death certificate of the original owner and the birth certificate of the heir would already, together with the proof of ownership of the descendant on the property, would already suffice as a documentary proof that the, the person applying the heir has a vested interest over the property concern.
There might be instances that there are multiple heirs in one deceased original owner. And I just thought that what if one of the heirs is applying for the clearance without the knowledge of the other heirs? How can we treat such instances?
The, the municipal assessor would be incompetent, Mr. Chair, to find out and determine who are the others, especially if, uh, the other heirs are not residing in the locality where the property is situated. So, it would be a lookout of everybody who are claiming inheritance over the property to inform the, to inform the municipal assessor. This is also necessary, Mr. Chair. Now, it's being brought out that there are instances when the heirs don't bother to transfer the tax declaration to their names. For whatever reason, it remains in the name of the descendant. Years in, years out, uh, the descendant's name is still appearing as owner of the property in the tax declaration. And with this, maybe, uh, everybody is on a lookout and everybody will have to inform the municipal assessor that he or she is one of the heirs of the descendant so that whenever somebody applies for a clearance, they will have also to be notified.
Hmm, so in the absence of the notification, the assessor will accept the, the birth certificate and death certificate?
Yes, because that particular individual has a vested interest over the property.
Even without the consent of other possible heirs?
That would be an internal matter, because if we will require consent from the other heirs, Mr. Chair, um, there are situations where the heirs are, is, uh, scattered.
Hmm.
Not only in the Philippines, but sometimes in, in foreign countries. And it would be very difficult to secure, and it will delay the processing of the clearance.
Yes.
So, I, I would still, uh, throw that back, that responsibility back to the other heirs, because definitely, they would somehow know the passing of the original owner. And when the original owner departs, dies incapacitated or whatever, uh, it's also the responsibility to do something and discuss among themselves as to the property. So, if, for example, I am one of the heirs and, uh, there is a property somewhere, I, I will have to notify the assessor there that, uh, I am one of the heirs of the property. If anyone comes over to your office and, uh, have the tax declaration transferred to his name, then please notify me also, so I can, I can interpose an objection.
Thank you, Honorable...
Thank you, Board Member Nadia Elong.
Thank you, Honorable Nadia Bianca Nicolet Elong. Uh, Honorable Lopez Ido Rado Jr. is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is my last, uh, question. Uh, consider this, uh, uh, ordinance approved, and we are now on implementation. So, in terms of reporting and monitoring, what's, what's the basis in order to strictly monitor the implementation of this ordinance? So that it will, uh, apply according to its purpose?
The, the ordinance requires, uh, some sort of indexing of all clearances issued. And then it also requires the submission of post-sorby reports, which will be, um, in, in, in that particular index also. So, and then, uh, the municipal assessor, although it's not anymore in the ordinance, the municipal assessor, just like in, in ordinary situations, will have to report to the provincial assessor. So, that would now be, uh, that would now depend on the provincial assessor in the implementing rules, if she will incorporate that into the implementing rules as to the submission to the provincial assessor of all the copies of the documents pertaining to clearances and post-sorby reports.
Uh, is it a annual report submitted by the municipal assessors to the provincial assessors, Mr. Chair? Annually, uh, they're going to report?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the ordinance doesn't, uh, state whether it's annual or monthly. And on section nine, it is stated, "Within fifteen working days upon completion or upon receipt of the stamped plan, the concerned government agency, the sorbyers shall provide a copy of the sorby plan to the municipal assessor's office. The sorby plan shall conform to the applicable standard. The situation, the copy submitted in the municipal assessor shall be for record purposes only." And then, uh, there is no mention anymore of whether it's monthly or quarterly or annually, Mr. Chair. That would now depend on the administrative procedure of the provincial assessor's office and the municipal assessor's office concern.
Uh, could it be, Mr. Chair, possible that, uh, the submission of reports from the municipal assessors to the provincial assessors be included in this, uh, ordinance?
I will not interpose any objection to the amendment, Mr. Chair. I will yield to the amendment. I just want to be clarified, uh, the pleasure of the gentleman from Katarman, whether it's, uh, weekly, monthly, quarterly, or annually.
Annually, Mr. Chair.
I yield to that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, uh, Bien Don.
Thank you, Honorable Lopez Ido Rado Jr.
Amendment?
Amendment? Yeah. Mr. Kataric, can you take note of that? Amendment to section nine?
Mr. Chairman, is the proponent ready? Uh, if it is of understanding, Mr. Chairman, that the period of interpolation has, has ended? And will, uh, subsequently, the period of amendment will follow?
Um, I, I understand, Mr. Chair, because there was already an amendment introduced by Board Member Ido Rado.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to propose some amendment. However, uh, before I go directly to my proposal, I'd like to make manifest, Mr. Chairman, that earlier in the, in the interpolation of our dear colleague, Honorable Odenio, he did mention that the, the phrase, or the word, sugad panibim bigbi, kay direkman kan, kay direkman imutuna. So, Mr. Chairman, I could not recollect or, or remember any, any quotation with that during my, my manifestation earlier. So, with this, Mr. Chairman, may I move that it be stricken off the record?
May I, may I ask, Mr. Chair, who made that statement attributing something to Board Member?
The Honorable Odenio, Mr. Chairman. Because, uh, I did not say that, Mr. Chairman, so it is already part, unparcial of the record. And I would like that it be stricken off the record, Mr. Chairman.
Before ruling on that motion, may we hear from Honorable Janice de Pila Odenio? Maybe she's, uh, insisting that you have stated that, uh... He made that statement.
Okay, yes, Mr. Chair. It could be stricken on the official record. What I say, uh, parang sampul ko lahat tong pag sugad niya, uh... Because our property now, most of our property, besan ko na ato na, is that our property because we lack the documentation. So, I said niya, maupay niya na ngayon 'yung ordinancea kay makakabulig para natmga property maging ato to establish the ownership. So, for that, I yelled to the manifestation of Board Member Bigbi to stricken the, what I've said. strike and what I've said, pero for the group, that is our group chat. Because when I BJ, nga nakpostak sa nakatok sa napunta, gana katwak, amon niya, haladam madir, kunimomani tuna. Ayaw pag ibutang sa record, haladam madir, kunimomatuna. So on that moment, I was bringing with me the documents. So ako gin, gin picturan, digin send ko ka niyang anak itong niya to na putat, amon niya. Kay diri mo man imu madir, abao ko kay oo, pero 'yan na adinate sa ako. So with that, Mr. Chair, I yelled nga, i-strike iton kay BM Bigbig na diri nga. But in reality, he was the one, san amo group chat, gana sugad, madir, diri matin imo. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Leonida Pilaudenio. I, disclaimer, you are not part of your group chat, maybe you have only your group chat, but maybe some of us here or most of us are not part of that group chat. Uh, yes, with that, with that motion, that portion as stated by Honorable Victoria M. Sixon II be stricken off the record. Sb. Secretary, can you take that of that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I mean now, I would like now to propose to the good sponsor by way of an amendment. And I'm referring under section twelve, under the revocation and denial, there are at least four instances wherein the Office of the Municipal Assessors may revoke or deny a clearance as enumerated and mentioned under section twelve. And the applicant upon revocation or denial of the application is only given opportunity to explain within five days from notice. So, Mr. Chairman, if the good sponsor would yield, I would like to propose that it be, instead of five days, be two, seven days. Because I think it will not, two days will not make a difference to give ample opportunity to the applicant to explain or whatever document that is needed just to be issued a clearance or to overturn the revocation or denial.
What is with number seven? Why not eight days? Why not nine days or ten days? What is with seven days?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at least seven days, Mr. Chairman, I believe it is already sufficient enough for the applicant to present some documents that that is the reasons for, maybe for the denial or revocation by the municipal assessor's office.
Do you hear from the proponent?
I yell to that, Mr. Chair.
Seven days, okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, any, anyone? Period of amendment? Yes, Honorable Leonida Pilaudenio? Maybe she will contest the seven days?
Just an inquiry, BM Bigbig, the seven days, it includes Saturdays and Sundays?
Uh, Mr. Chair, in my in my civil law class, when I was in the College of Law, when the provision doesn't qualify, then the interpretation will not also qualify. So, when we talk here of days, it means all the days in the week. So seven days would be seven calendar days.
That includes Saturdays and Sundays?
Which exclude the first, but include the last. So for example, for example, the notice is received today and today is October twenty-seven, you start counting on twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, November one, November two, the seventh day would be November three.
It is just a clarification, because mostly, another mga employee, do they only work for five days? So what if they will?
Mr. Chair, this is not for the employee. This is for the applicant. The applicant received a notice that his application is for revocation or for denial, then he has seven days from receipt of that notice to explain why it should not be revoked, why it should not be denied.
Okay, so what I'm thinking is the Office of the Assessor or the assessor itself. Example, the application was received on Monday, Monday. Counting on Monday, for example, November one, that is Monday. So, siyempre mag opisina la siya five days. So if ever, the ordinance will say seven days. So, mapipiritan na't mga municipal assessor.
As I explained earlier, for example, the notice is received today, which is Monday, then the applicant has until Monday next week within which to file his explanation. And he has all the week to prepare his explanation. He can submit that on Monday the following week.
So the seven days, it includes everything, or Saturday or Sunday. Another inquiry, so, okay naksit on. Another question is, instead of five days, nag seven days, kaya ano, instead of five days in the ordinance, in the original ordinance, in the amendments, it says seven days. If ever, before the seven days, the municipal assessor denies, for example, largus siya tinagan, an applicant nga, your application is denied. So that is the time nga maaro ak san resibo from the assessor nga denied. So that I have time to go to the provincial assessor.
If ever, the municipal assessor denies before the expiration of the seven-day period from notice of the prospective denial, then the municipal assessor is committing a violation. Because the provision of the ordinance says, revocation and/or denial shall be issued only after the applicant shall have been given the opportunity to explain. So it is only after the lapse of the seven-day period where the assessor can actually deny now the application.
So example, you receive, as an applicant, I receive the denial, the reason of the assessor, your application is denied after eight days or ten days. So that's the time now to apply at the provincial office?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. That's only my query. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Leonida Pilaudenio.
And for the information of everybody, Mr. Chair, our law is clear that when the last day falls on a Saturday, Sunday, or a holiday, it is automatically extended to the next business day. So for example, if the seven-day period would end on Saturday or Sunday or holiday, the applicant has until the next business day.
Thank you, Honorable Leonida Pilaudenio. So, the period of, anyone, any, so with that, the proponent, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and with the interpolation and the proposed amendments introduced by our colleagues in the San Beniaman Pandalawigan, may I now move for the approval of the proposed ordinance on second reading, the ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Establishing a Clearance Requirement for Property Surveys and for Other Purposes. I sumo, Mr. Chair.
Second.
With that motion duly seconded, and after that lively debate, interpolation, the proposed ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Establishing a Clearance Requirement for Property Survey and for Other Purposes is hereby approved on second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon, Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now proceed under item letter B, Review of Municipal Ordinances and Resolutions. The first committee scheduled to render the committee report is the Committee on Housing, Land Use, and Zoning. Kindly please recognize the good chairman of this committee, the Honorable Don El Abalon, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Don El Abalon is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For and in behalf of the Committee on Housing, Land Use, and Zoning, I have the honor to render our committee report on the endorsement of the final draft of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, or CLUP, and zoning ordinance of the municipality of San Isidro for the planning period 2023 to 2032. The local government unit has the authority to prepare its comprehensive land use plan pursuant to section twenty, paragraph C of RA seventy-one sixty in relation to Executive Order Number Seventy-two, Series of nineteen ninety-three. The CLUP and other pertinent documents of the municipality of San Isidro was submitted to the Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development Regional Office for the latter's preliminary review and evaluation on which confirmed that the documents complied with the required content and format in accordance with existing laws, rules, and regulations and included all relevant and necessary data and legal attachment. There is a need, however, for further technical review and evaluation by the Provincial Land Use Committee, hence the necessity of referring this matter thereto. Accordingly, this committee respectfully moves for the adoption of this committee report and to pass a resolution referring and endorsing the final draft of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and Zoning Ordinance of the Municipality of San Isidro for the planning period 2023 to 2032 to the Provincial Land Use Committee for Further Technical Review. I sumo, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion which is duly seconded for the adoption of the committee report and to pass a resolution referring and endorsing the final draft of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, CLUP, and zoning ordinances of the Municipality of San Isidro Northern Summer for the planning period 2023 to 2032 to the Provincial Land Use Committee for Further Technical Review. Hearing the objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon, Chairman, Committee on Housing, Land Use, and Zoning, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. With the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Housing, Land Use, and Zoning, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration of the recommendation of the committee to pass a resolution, may I move that the internal rules be suspended? It's moved.
With that motion duly seconded, internal rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading. A resolution referring and endorsing the final draft of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, CLUP, and Zoning Ordinance, ZO of the Municipality of San Isidro Northern Summer for the planning period 2023 dash 2032 to the Provincial Land Use Committee, PLUC, for Further Technical Review. It's moved, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion which is duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution referring and endorsing the final draft of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, CLUP, and Zoning Ordinance of the Municipality of San Isidro Northern Summer for the planning period 2023 to 2032 to the Provincial Land Use Committee for Further Technical Review. Hearing the objection, this motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next committee, we have a joint committee report between the Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization and by the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations. The lead committee to render its committee report is the Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization. Kindly please recognize the good chairman of this committee, the Honorable Janicio Dexter de Galit, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Janicio Dexter de Galit is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Leader. On Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization, together with the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, a joint committee report, subject ordinance is ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-four of the Municipality of Gama in Northern Summer entitled, An Ordinance Abolishing the Position of Engineer Four, Salary Grade Twenty-Two, and Creating the Position of the Municipal Government Assistant Department Head One, Assistant Municipal Engineer under the Office of the Municipal Engineer of the Municipality of Gama in Northern Summer. The findings and observations of the committee, the joint committee rather. Number one, the enactment of the subject ordinance is well within the power and authority of the LGO to design, approve, and implement the organizational structure and stopping pattern pursuant to the pertinent provision of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one. Number two, savings from the abolished position were utilized for the creation of the Municipal Government Assistant Department Head One under the Office of the Municipal Engineer. Number three, after its review, the local finance committee in its second endorsement dated twenty-two October twenty twenty-five has recommended declaring the subject ordinance operative which this committee can course. Number four, provided, however, that the implementation be of the same shall be in accordance with the provision of the Civil Service Commission Memorandum Circular Number Twelve, Series of Twenty Twenty Two on the guidelines and standards in establishment of organizational structure and stopping patterns in local government units. The recommendation of the joint committee, these committees respectfully recommends to the San Beniaman Pandalawigan that a resolution be passed to declare ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-four of the Municipality of Gama in Northern Summer, valid and operative subject to the permission conditions. Submitted resolution this twenty-seventh day of October twenty twenty-five, Gataan in Northern Summer. Signed by this representation as Chairman of the Committee on Civil Service, signed by Honorable Don El Abalon, Chairman of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation, signed by Honorable Leonida Pilaudenio, Vice-Chairperson of the Committee on Civil Service, signed, Honorable Lorian Diui, Member Committee on the Civil Service, and signed by Honorable Victoria M. Sixon II, Member of the Committee on Civil Service. I sumo for the adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion which is duly seconded to pass a resolution to declare ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-four of the Municipality of Gama in Northern Summer valid and operative subject to the conditions stated in the committee report. Hearing the objections, said motion is hereby approved. Thank you, Honorable Janicio Dexter de Galit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, with the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization jointly with the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration in final reading, it's moved that the rules, that the internal rules be suspended.
With that motion duly seconded, internal rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-four of the Municipality of Gama, Northern Summer, an ordinance abolishing the positions of Engineer Four, Salary Grade Twenty-Two, and creating the position of Municipal Government Assistant Department Head One to Assistant Municipal Engineer under the Office of the Municipal Engineer in the Municipality of Gama, Northern Summer. We declared valid and operative subject to some conditions. It's moved, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion which is duly seconded for the approval on final reading of a resolution declaring ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-four. declaring ordinance number 2025-24 of the Municipality of Gama Northern Summer valid and operative subject to some conditions. Hearing the objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the next committee report. Kindly please recognize the good chairman of the Committee on Public Order and Safety, the honorable Janisio Dexter de Galit, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Janisio Dexter de Galit is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Committee on Public Order and Safety, the Committee on Public Order and Safety to which was referred Municipal Resolution Number 2025-228-19 of the Municipality of Catarman Northern Summer entitled "A Resolution Adapting the Peace and Order on Public Safety, or PAP'S Plan" of 2026 to 2028 of the Municipality of Catarman Northern Summer, has considered the same. Has the honor to report it back to this angunyang panalawigan with the following findings. Number one, the subject resolution approved and adopted the peace and order on public safety, or PAP'S Plan, for calendar year 2026 to 2028 of the said municipality. Number two, the said PAP'S Plan was previously approved by the Municipal Development Council or the MDC and endorsed to this angunyang bayan two and by virtue of MDC Resolution Number 006, series of 2025. Number three, this committee submits that the said peace and order plan is in substantial compliance with Republic Act 7160 and its IRR and other pertinent laws, rules, and regulations, and concludes that there are no legal impediments for the same to be operative. The local government unit, number four, the local government unit concerned, however, is in joint to ensure the provision or the availability of funds necessary to carry out PPAs of the plan and to fully comply with the mandatory requirements or mandatory budgetary provisions rather in the actual implementation of plan. Accordingly, this committee respectfully moves to declare municipal ordinance number 2025-2028-19 of the Municipality of Catarman Northern Summer valid and operative subject to the condition mentioned above and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations submitted for resolution this 27th day of October 2025, Catarman Northern Summer. Signed by this representation as Chairman of the Committee, signed by Honorable Nelyse Hernandez, Vice-Chairman of the Committee on Public Order and Safety, and signed by Honorable Don El Abalon, Member of the Committee on Public Order and Safety. I sumo for the adoption of this report, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
There is a motion which is duly seconded to pass a resolution declaring municipal resolution number 2025-228-19 of the Municipality of Catarman Northern Summer valid and operative subject to the conditions as stated in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing the objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Janisio Dexter de Galit, Chairman, Committee on Public Order and Safety, Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Public Order and Safety, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration on final reading, it's move that the internal rules be suspended. It's move.
With that motion, duly seconded, internal rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring resolution number 2025-228-19 of the Municipality of Catarman Northern Summer valid and operative subject to the conditions and those mentioned and prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. It's move.
There is a motion which is duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring municipal resolution number 2025-228-19 of the Municipality of Catarman Northern Summer valid and operative subject to some conditions. Hearing the objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the committee report on Tourism, Arts, and Culture. Kindly please recognize the good chairperson of this committee, the honorable Asela Rupa Andrea Gilayog, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Asela Rupa Andrea Gilayog is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, dear colleagues. May I have the honor to report to render our committee report on behalf of the Committee on Tourism, Arts, and Culture? Submitted for review before the Committee on Tourism, Arts, and Culture is ordinance number 20-2025 entitled "An Ordinance Establishing a System of Accreditation of Tourism Enterprises Operating in the Municipality of Capul Northern Summer." The Municipality of Capul aims to strengthen the local implementation of RA Number 9593, also known as the Tourism Act of 2009, to ensure that all tourism enterprises in the municipality are compliant with the standards set by the Department of Tourism. The ordinance institutionalizes a local accreditation system for tourism enterprises operating in the municipality and outlines the following measures for implementation. Number one, general registration of tourism enterprises with the Municipal Tourism Office indicating the type of tourism activity or service offered within the municipality. Number two, licensing of tour operators and similar tourism service providers, which requires a DOT accreditation and a permit to operate from the LGU before offering tour packages or services in Capul. The licensing process includes documentary compliance, coordination with the Municipal Tourism Office, and payment of corresponding annual license fee. Number three, tour guides must obtain a tour guiding license or permit from the LGU. A valid DOT certificate of accreditation, among other requirements, must be secured before the issuance of such license. Basic tourism orientation will be conducted by the Municipal Tourism Office for new resident applicants of a tour guiding license. Number four, accreditation of all accommodation establishments, including hotels, resorts, lodging, lodging houses, inns, and cottages through the Municipal Tourism Office. A sticker or a municipal tourism accreditation certificate shall be issued to accredited establishments and shall be posted or displayed in the business premises. Number five, accreditation and licensing of transport service providers to ensure that transport services engaged in tourism activities operate in coordination with existing municipal regulations, national policies, and relevant agencies. A public hearing was conducted to allow concerned tourism stakeholders to present their views, recommendations, and inputs before the enactment of the ordinance, ensuring transparency and participatory local governance. The committee found that the ordinance is in accordance with RA Number 7160, which authorizes local government units to deliver and regulate tourism-related services, and RA Number 9593, specifically section 39 and rule 8, and rule 8, chapter 1, section 122, item B, subsection B, item 4 of its IRR, which require accreditation of primary tourism enterprises by the Department of Tourism before the issuance of LGU permits. Premises considered, this committee is respectfully recommending for the passage of a resolution declaring ordinance number 20-2025 of the Municipality of Capul, this province, valid and operative. Therefore, I move for the adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion which is duly seconded for the adoption of the committee report and for the passage of a resolution declaring ordinance number 20-2025 of the Municipality of Capul Northern Summer, valid and operative. Hearing the objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Asela Rupa Andrea Gilayog, Chairperson, Committee on Tourism, Arts, and Culture, Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, with the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Tourism, Arts, and Culture, and in order to pave the way for its consideration and final reading, I sumo that the internal rules be suspended.
With that motion, duly seconded, internal rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number 20-2025 of the Municipality of Capul Northern Summer, valid and operative. It's move, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion which is duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring ordinance number 20-2025 of the Municipality of Capul Northern Summer, valid and operative. Hearing the objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. For the next committee report is the Committee on Education. Kindly please again recognize the honorable Asela Rupa Andrea Gilayog.
Honorable Asela Rupa Andrea Gilayog is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of the Committee on Education, may I have the honor to report our committee report? Submitted for review before the Committee on Education is municipal ordinance number 2025-21, series of 2025 of the Municipality of Mapanas, this province, entitled "An Ordinance Strengthening the Local Literacy and Numeracy Council and Coordinating Unit in the Municipality of Mapanas Northern Summer and Providing Funds Therefore." The ordinance highlights the importance of strengthening the local literacy and numeracy council to foster quality education of the youth with the creation of a local literacy and numeracy council, LLNC. It identifies the council members and outlines the factions of the LLNC, which include revitalizing the reading and numeracy program in the local system, encouraging out-of-school youth and children to attend a formal or alternative learning school, and revitalizing the reading centers in every barangay, among others. Additionally, the ordinance mandates the LLNC to conduct quarterly meetings and to appropriate funding from the Special Education Fund to ensure the effective and efficient implementation of literacy and numeracy initiatives across the municipality. The committee found that the ordinance aligns with section 5, paragraph 1 of Article 14 of the 1987 Constitution, which mandates that the state shall take into account any regional and sectoral needs and conditions and shall encourage local planning in the development of educational policies and programs. It is also in accordance with RA Number 10533, also known as the Enhanced Basic Education Act of 2013. Furthermore, it supports the Department of Education programs such as Early Language Literacy and Numeracy Initiative and conforms with the DEPLG Joint Memorandum Circular Number 1, series of 2024, directing local government units to establish or strengthen local literacy councils to enhance community-based literacy initiatives. Premises considered, this committee is respectfully recommending for the passage of a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 2025-21, series of 2025 of the Municipality of Mapanas, this province, valid and operative. I therefore move for the adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair.
Second.
There is a motion which is duly seconded for the passage of a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 2025-21, series of 2025, of the Municipality of Mapanas Northern Summer, valid and operative. Hearing the objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Asela Rupa Andrea Gilayog.
As for the second item supposedly under the Committee on Education, Mr. Chair, upon review, SB Ordinance Number 2025-29 of the Municipality of Rosario Northern Summer entitled "An Ordinance Institutionalizing the LGU Employee Scholarship Program of the Municipality of Rosario, Establishing Its Guidelines and Providing Funds Therefore", has been determined that the ordinance was inadvertently referred to the Committee on Education. I therefore move for its withdrawal and proper referral to the Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, may I move for a few minutes suspension?
Sure, sure, just wait. Uh, yeah, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before the few minutes suspension, there was a motion coming from the chairperson of the Committee on Education that SB Ordinance Number 2025-2029 of the Municipality of Rosario Northern Summer, which was referred during the last session to her committee, and by her motion that it be referred to the appropriate committees, which is the Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization, Mr. Chairman. That is the the status of, of, uh, this pending motion.
With that, the pending motion, which is duly seconded for the withdrawal of the referral to the Committee on Education, the ordinance institutionalizing the LGU Employees Scholarship Program of the Municipality of Rosario, and be referred to the proper committee, which is the Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization. So, hearing the objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Asela Rupa Andrea Gilayog, Chairperson, Committee on Education, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. With the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Education, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, it's move that the internal rules be suspended. It's move.
With that motion, duly seconded, internal rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number 2025-21, series of 2025 of the Municipality of Mapanas Northern Summer, valid and operative. It's move.
There is a motion which is duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 2025-21, series of 2025, of the Municipality of Mapanas Northern Summer, valid and operative. Hearing the objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To proceed with our session, item number six, committee report. The next committee to render its committee report, we have the Committee on Health. Kindly please recognize the good chairperson of said committee, the honorable Florian Dui, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Florian Dui is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A pleasant good afternoon to everyone. As Chair of the Committee on Health, I have the honor to present two committee reports under the Committee on Health. The first committee report would be from the Municipality of Gama. The Committee on Health, to which was referred municipal ordinance number 2025-33 of the Municipality of Gama Northern Summer, entitled "An Ordinance Approving the Upgrading of Gama Rural Health Unit as a Primary Healthcare Facility in the Municipality of Gama Northern Summer", has considered the same as the honor to report it back to this angunyang panalawigan within the following findings and observations. The municipal ordinance number The Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Thirty-Three of the Municipality of Gamay was referred to the above-mentioned committee for study and appropriate action. That the committee found that the subject ordinance is consistent with the Section Fifteen, Article Two of the Nineteen Eighty-Seven Philippine Constitution, which mandates the state to protect and promote the right to health of the people and to instill health consciousness among them. The enactment of the subject ordinance is a valid exercise of legislative power of the Osagun Niang Panat Bayan as prescribed under the Republic Act Seven One Six Zero, particularly Section Sixteen and Section Seventeen thereof, which mandates the local government units to exercise their powers and discharge their functions as necessary and appropriate for effective provision of basic services, including health and wel- social welfare services. Provided however, that the aforementioned municipality shall comply with the DOH Administrative Order Number One Five Zero, Series of Two Thousand Four, Section Ten, Requirements and Procedures for Application of Permit and License, specifically in change of classification, and provided further that all primary healthcare facilities shall secure a Department of Health license to operate and must be compliant at all times with the licensing standards and requirements set forth by the Health Facilities and Services Regulatory Bureau and the Food and Drug and the Food and Health Food and Drug Authority pursuant to the DOH Administrative Order Number Two Twenty Twenty Dash Zero Zero Four Seven, General Guidelines. Wherefore, this committee respectfully recommends to this August body that the resolution be passed to declare that the ordinance, that the municipal ordinance Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Thirty-Three of the Municipality of Gamay, Northern Summer, valid and operative, subject to aforementioned conditions, pertinent laws, rules, and regulations. Submitted for resolution this twenty-seventh day of October, signed by all men, uh, signed by this representation, and signed by members Honorable Leonida Laudensho, Honorable Asela Rupa Andrea Layog, and Honorable Kina Selbano. If there are no questions or manifestations, I move for the adoption of this committee report.
There's a motion which has duly seconded to pass a resolution to declare Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Thirty-Three of the Municipality of Gamay, Northern Summer, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as provided in the committee report, particularly among others, DOH Administrative Order Number One Five Zero, Series of Two Thousand Four, Section Ten thereof, the requirements and procedures for application of permits and license, specifically in change of classification, and pertinent laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Another committee report from the money for the Municipality of Pambuhan. The Committee on Health, to which was referred Municipal Ordinance Number Four, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Pambuhan, Northern Summer, entitled "An Ordinance to Upgrade the Health Services of Pambuhan and to Operate as Primary Healthcare Facility", has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the Sanguniang Palalawigan with the following findings and observation. That the Municipal Ordinance Number Four, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Pambuhan, was referred to the above-mentioned committee for study and appropriate action. The committee found that the subject ordinance is consistent with the Section Fifteen, Article Two of the Nineteen Eighty-Seven Constitution, which mandates the state to protect and promote the right to health of the people and to instill health consciousness among them. The enactment of this subject ordinance is a valid exercise and legislative power of the Sanguniang Bayan as prescribed under the Republic Act Seven One Sixty, particularly Section Sixteen and Section Seventeen thereof, which mandates the local government units to exercise their powers and discharge their functions as necessary and appropriate for the effective provision of basic services, including health and social welfare ser- services. Provided however, that the aforementioned municipality shall comply with the DOH Administrative Order Number One Five Zero, Series of Two Thousand Four, Section Ten, Requirements and Procedures for Application of Permit and License, specifically in change of classification, and provided further that the said primary healthcare facility shall secure Department of Health license to operate and must be compliant at all times with the licensing standards and requirements set forth by the Health Facilities and Services Regulatory Bureau and Food and Drug Authority pursuant to the DOH Administrative Order Number Twenty Twenty Dash Zero Zero Four Seven, General Guidelines. Wherefore, this committee respectfully recommends to the Sanguniang Palalawigan that a resolution be passed to declare the Municipal Ordinance Number Four, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Pambuhan, valid and operative, subject to the aforementioned conditions, pertinent laws, rules, and regulations. Submitted for resolution this twenty-seventh of October, Katarman, Northern Summer, signed by this representation, along with members of the he- other members of the Health Committee on Health, Honorable Leonida Laudensho, Honorable Asela Rupa Andrea Layog, and Honorable Kina Selbano. If there are no questions or manifestations, I move for the adoption of this committee report.
Second.
There's a motion which has duly seconded to pass a resolution to declare Municipal Ordinance Number Four, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Pambuhan, Northern Summer, valid and operative, subject to the conditions stated in the committee report and to pertinent laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Florian Diui, Chairperson, Committee on Health. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Health, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, I assume that internal rules be suspended. So move.
With that motion duly seconded, internal rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading. Declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty Five Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Thirty-Three of the Municipality of Gamay, Northern Summer, valid and operative, subject to some conditions and other pertinent laws, rules, and regulations. So move.
There's a motion which has duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Thirty-Three of the Municipality of Gamay, Northern Summer, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. I move for approval of a resolution and final reading. Declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Four, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Pambuhan, Northern Summer, valid and operative, subject to some con- to the conditions and other pertinent laws, rules, and regulations. So move.
There's a motion which has duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Four, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Pambuhan, Northern Summer, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing, no objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair, for the committee report report on disaster risk reduction management. Kindly please, please recognize the good chairman of said committee, the Honorable Lopez I Dorado Junior, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Lopez I Dorado Junior is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Leader. For on behalf of the Committee on Disaster Risk Reduction Management, I have the honor to render our committee report for our Municipal Ordinance Number Eleven Dash Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Lapinig, Northern Summer, entitled "An Ordinance Implementing Preemptive and Force Evacuation as a Resort When a Disaster or Emergency Has Been Declared in the Municipality of Lapinig, Northern Summer and Danger of Loss of Lives Becomes Eminent, Providing Penalties Therefore and For Other Purposes", has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to this August body with the following findings and observations. The subject ordinance was enacted to provide standing operating procedures during the force evacuation in times of calamities in the Municipality of Lapinig, Northern Summer. The enactment of the subject ordinance is in accordance with Section Sixteen, General Welfare Clause of the Local Government of Nineteen Ninety-One. Likewise, the enactment of the subject ordinance complies with the Department of Interior and Local Government Memorandum Circular Number Two Thousand Twelve Dash Thirty-Five, dated Twenty One of February, Two Thousand Twelve, to cause the enactment of a local ordinance for the implementation of force evacuation as a resort when a disaster or emergency has been declared and danger of loss of lives is imminent within the areas of jurisdiction. This committee submits that the enactment of the subject ordinance is a valid exercise of the legislative power of the Sanguniang Bayan of Lapinig, Northern Summer, provided however, that it is its implementation shall be in accordance with the Republic Act Number One O One Two One or the Philippine Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Act of Twenty Ten and those prescribed existing laws, rules, and regulations. Submitted for resolution this twenty-seventh day of October, Twenty Twenty-Five, at Katarman, Northern Summer, signed by this representation as chairman, signed Honorable Neil Is Hernandez, Vice Chairman, and all the and the members of this committee, Honorable Don El Abalon, and Honorable Victorio M. Singson II. I move for the adoption of this resolution, Mr. Chair. So move.
Second.
Maybe the proponent can also make the proper motion for the for its recommendation of this committee report. And I suppose that uh, aside from the adoption of this committee report, the passage of a resolution to declare this municipal ordinance uh, valid, which is what is stated in the committee report.
Again, uh, again, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Committee report.
A committee report, Mr. Chair.
Uh, with that, uh, with that motion for the adoption of committee report, and it's in the re- committee report that the reviewed ordinance, proposed municipal ordinance, is valid and must be compliant also to existing laws, rules, and regulations. So with that motion duly seconded, the Municipal Ordinance Number Eleven Dash Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Lapinig, Northern Summer is declared as valid, is contained in the committee report. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Lopez I Dorado Junior, Chairman, Committee on Disaster Risk Reduction Management. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Disaster Risk Reduction and Management, and in order to pave the way for its consideration and final reading, I assume that internal rules be suspended. So move.
With that motion duly seconded, internal rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. Move for approval of a resolution and final reading. Declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Eleven Dash Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Lapinig, Northern Summer, valid, provided that its implementation shall be in accordance with the Republic Act Number One O One Twenty-One or the Philippine Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Act of Twenty Twenty Ten and those prescribed by sixteen laws, rules, and regulations. So move, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion which has duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Eleven Dash Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Lapinig, Northern Summer, valid, provided that its implementation shall be in accordance with the Philippine Disaster Risk Reduction Management Act of Twenty Ten and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To proceed, Mr. Chairman, for the last committee report, under a review of municipal ordinances and resolution, we have the Committee on Youth Youth and Sports Development. Kindly please recognize the the Youth Pole Members of this August body, the Honorable Gerardo Gerard A Miranda, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Gerardo Gerard A Miranda is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Leader. On behalf of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, may I have the honor to render our committee report. The Committee on Youth and Sports Development, which was referred Municipal Ordinance Number Six Nine One, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Lauang, Northern Summer, entitled "Ordinance Creating Municipal Sports Development Council of Lauang, Northern Summer", and organizing sports development programs of the Municipality of Lauang, Northern Summer, and appropriating funds thereof, repelling or amending any previous ordinances inconsistent thereto, has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to this Sanguniang Palalawigan with the recommendation that a resolution be passed to declare the subject ordinance valid and operative for being consistent with Article Fourteen, Section Nineteen of the Philippine Constitution, which provides that the state shall promote physical education and encourage sports programs, and as such, there is no legal impediment to declare the same valid. Submitted for this submitted for resolution this twenty-seventh day of October, Twenty Twenty-Five, Katarman, Northern Summer, signed by this representation as chairperson and signed by the majority of the members of this committee. Therefore, move for the adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chairman. I assume, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion which has duly seconded for the passage of a resolution to declare Municipal Ordinance Number Six Nine One, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Lauang, Northern Summer, valid and operative. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Gerardo Gerard A Miranda, Chairman, Committee on Youth and Sports Development. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, with the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, I assume that internal rules be suspended. So move.
With that motion duly seconded, internal rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of a municipal ordinance number uh, let me rephrase, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading. Declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Six Nine One, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Lauang, Northern Summer, valid and operative for being consistent with with Article Fourteen, Section Nineteen of of the Philippine Constitution, Of The Philippine Constitution, Which Provides That The State Shall Promote Physical Education And Encourage Sports Program And Considering That There Is No Legal Impediment. So move, Mr. Chairman.
There's A Motion Which Is Do List Counted For The Approval And Final Reading Of A Resolution Declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Six Nine One Series Of Twenty Twenty Five Of The Municipality Of Lauang, Northern Samar Valid And Operative. Hearing Objection, Said Motion Is Hereby Approved.
Thank You, Mr. Chairman. We Now Proceed With The Next Item In The Order In The Agenda, Which Is Item Number Seven. We Have Two Proposed Ordinances Scheduled On Third And Final Reading. I'm Rephrasing To Item Is Letter A And B. Both Both Ordinances Are Are The Proponent Is The Honorable Don El Abalon, Chairman, Committee On Laws, Justice, Human Rights And Public Accountability. Kindly Please Recognize The Honorable Don El Abalon, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Don El Abalon Is Recognized.
Thank You, Mr. Chair, But I Just Would Like To Manifest That The Sponsor Of These Two Ordinances Is The Committee On Laws, Justice, Human Rights And Public Accountability. And I Just Happen To Be Its Chairperson, So I'm The One Representing The Committee, Mr. Chair. And With That, May I Move For The Approval On Third And Final Reading Of The Proposed Ordinance An Ordinance Adapting The New Official Logo Of The Provincial Planning And Development Office Of The Province Of Northern Samar Prescribing Its Use And imposing Penalty For An Official And Or Unauthorized Use thereof. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Hi, Second.
There's A Motion Which Is Do List Counted For The Approval On Third And Final Reading Of The Proposed Ordinance Adapting The New Official Logo Of The Provincial Planning And Development Office, P P D O, Of The Province Of Northern Samar Prescribing Its Use And imposing Penalty For An Official And Or Unauthorized Use thereof. Hearing No Objection, Said Motion Is Hereby Approved.
Thank You, Mr. Chair. May I Likewise Move For The Approval On Third And Final Reading Of The Proposed Ordinance Entitled An Ordinance Adapting The Official Logo Of The Northern Samar Public Employment Service Office In The Province Of Northern Samar Prescribing Its Use And imposing Penalty For An Official And Or Unauthorized Use thereof. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
There's A Motion Which Is Do List Counted For The Approval On Third And Final Reading Of The Proposed Ordinance Adapting The Official Logo Of Northern Samar Public Employment Service Office, N S Peso, In The Province Of Northern Samar Prescribing Prescribing Its Use And imposing Penalty For An Official And Or Unauthorized Use thereof. Hearing No Objection, Said Motion Is Hereby Approved.
Thank You, Mr. Chair.
Thank You, Honorable Don El Abalon, Chairman, Committee On Laws, Justice, Human Rights And Public Accountability. Majority Leader.
Thank You, Mr. Chairman, For The Next Item In The Agenda. I Believe, Mr. Chairman, No Members Registered To Be Recognized Under The Item Number Eight. The Foundation Question Are Therefore, We Now Proceed With The Next Item, Other Matters. Mr. Chairman, Under Other Matters, Item Is Letter A. We Have Municipal Ordinances, Resolutions Endorsed To The Office Of The Honorable Vice Governor, Presiding Officer And We're Referred To The Appropriate Committees. Mr. Chairman, Considering That There Are Thirteen Items As Reflected In The Order In The Agenda I Therefore Move That The Reading Be Dispensed With. Considered It As Read And Incorporated Into The Journal Of Proceedings In Our Today's Session. So move, Mr. Chairman.
There's A Motion Which Is Do List Counted To Dispense With The Reading Of All The Items Under Other Matters. Item A Numbers One To Thirteen And Considered The Same As Read And Being Incorporated To The Journals Of Today's Regular Session. Hearing No Objection, Said Motion Is Hereby Approved.
Thank You, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, Still Under Item Number Nine, Other Matters. A Member Would Like To Be Recognized. Kindly Please, The Honorable Rupa Asela Andrea Layo, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Asela Rupa Andrea G. Layo Is Recognized. Baka Rupa Gutierrez. Inuna Man Rupa, Akala Rupa.
Thank You, Mr. Chair. I Have Two Items I Would Like To Take Up Under Other Matters, Both Relating To A Proposed To Proposed Resolutions Of Commendation That I Am Sponsoring. To Proceed With The First Item, May I Move To Withdraw From The Committee On Tourism, Arts And Culture The Proposed Resolution Entitled "A Resolution Commending The Provincial Tourism Office Headed By Miss Maria Josette G. Doctor For Its Crucial Role In The Provincial Government Of Northern Samar's Recent Accomplishment As Grand Prize Winner In The Atop Pearl Awards Twenty Twenty Five For Best Practices In Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category With Its Entry La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park A Journey Of Transformation, Hope And Sustainability." It Was Read During First Reading And Referred To The Committee On Tourism, Arts And Culture Last October Thirteen, Twenty Twenty Five. Since This Proposed Resolution Of Commendation Is Straight Forward, I Move To Withdraw It From The Committee And Present It Directly To This August Body For Immediate Consideration And Approval, Mr. Chair. I Move For The Withdrawal Of The Of The Proposed Resolution From My Committee And Present It Directly To This August Body.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Chairman, There Is A Motion, Pending Motion That The Proposed Resolution Be Withdrawn And Be Considered During The Other Matters And In Order To pave The Way For Its Consideration, I so move That Internal Rules Be Suspended.
With That Motion Do List Counted, Internal Rules Suspended. The Proponent May Proceed.
Thank You, Mr. Chair. I Am Honored To Sponsor This Resolution Of Commendation For The Provincial Tourism Office Led By Miss Josette G. Doctor For Their Outstanding Efforts In Bringing Pride And Recognition To The Province Of Northern Samar. Through Their Hard Work And Dedication, Our Province Was Awarded Grand Prize Winner In The Twenty Twenty Five Atop Pearl Awards For Best Practices In Community-Based Tourism. This Achievement Is Not Only A Triumph For The Provincial Tourism Office, But A Testament To What A Collaborate What Collaboration Passion And Genuine Service Can Achieve With Our People And Communities. With That, Mr. Chair, May I Proceed To Read The Resolution Of Commendation. Proposed Resolution Is Entitled "Resolution Commending The Provincial Tourism Office Headed By Miss Maria Josette Doctor For Its Crucial Role In The Provincial Government Of Northern Samar's Recent Accomplishment As Grand Prize Winner In The Atop Pearl Awards Twenty Twenty Five For Best Practices In Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category With Its Entry La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park A Journey Of Transformation, Hope And Sustainability." Whereas The Provincial Tourism Office Proudly Represented The Provincial Government Of Northern Samar In The Prestigious Atop Pearl Awards Twenty Twenty Five. The Atop Pearl Awards Organized By The Association Of Tourism Officers Of The Philippines Aims To Honor Exceptional Practices, Projects And Innovations In The Tourism Industry. This Annual Recognize Recognition System Celebrates The Contributions Of Local Government Units And Individuals Who Have Significantly Impacted The Tourism Sector. Whereas, One Of The Province's Eco Tourism Gems, La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park In Barangay San Isidro, La Visarese Was Featured Under The Best Practices For Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category. This Entry Not Only Emphasizes The Importance Of Preserving Mangrove Forest And The Inspiring Story Behind This Three Hundred Hectors Mangrove Forest Which Is Now Under The Care Of La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park Association Whose Journey Proved How Community Stewardship Can Transform A National Natural Resource Into A Sustainable Livelihood And Thriving Tourism Site. Whereas, In Defending Its Entry In The Atop Pearl Awards The Provincial Tourism Office Proudly Shared The Transformative Tale Of How The Eco Park Changed The Lives Of The Members Of This Local Community From Simple Day-to-Day Living To Becoming Empowered Stewards Of An Eco Tourism Site That Champions Conservation, Livelihood And Inclusivity. And How The Community Continues To Safeguard The Environment While Opening Opportunities For Sustainable Tourism. Tourism That Uplifts Not Just One Life But An Entire Community. Whereas, The Provincial Government Of Northern Samar Was A Judge As The Atop Pearl Awards Twenty Twenty Five Grand Prize Winner In The Best Practices For Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category For Its Entry La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park A Journey Of Transformation, Hope And Sustainability Besting Besting Other Entries From Across The Country In Ceremonies Held At The Supreme Mall And Events, Baguio City On October Two, Twenty Twenty Five. Whereas, Fully Aware Of Its Mandate As The Provincial Government Of Northern Samar's Arm In Their Operation And Promotion Of La Laguna Eco Park This Sangguniang Panlalawigan Recognizes The Crucial Role Of The Provincial Tourism Office Under The Leadership Of Miss Maria Josette G. Doctor Particularly In The Preparation Of The Entry Up To Its Successful Defense Before The Esteemed Members Of The Panel Of Judges In The Atop Pearl Awards Twenty Twenty Five. This Sanggunian Likewise Acknowledges The Significant Role Of Then-Governor Edwin Marino C. Ongchuan In Laying Its Foundation By Providing The Initial Funds For Its Construction The Continued Support Of The Current Governor Harris Christopher M. Ongchuan And The Assistance Extended By Other Stakeholders Namely Municipal Tourism Officer, L G U La Visarese Northern Samar Association Of Tourism Officers Of The Philippines Tourism Infrastructure And Enterprise Development Authority U E P Center For Environmental Studies Department Of Labor And Employment Department Of Tourism Region Eight Department Of Trade And Industry Provincial Office La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park Association And The Barangay Officials Of San Isidro, La Visarese, Northern Samar. Now Therefore, Upon Motion Of This Representation Chairperson Of Committee On Tourism, Culture And Arts, Julie Second Conde, This Sanggunian Resolves At As It Is Hereby Resolve To Commend As It Hereby Commends The Provincial Tourism Office Headed By Miss Maria Josette G. Doctor For Its Crucial Role In The Provincial Government Of Northern Samar's Recent Accomplishment As A Grand Prize Winner In The Best Practices For Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category For Its Entry La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park, A Journey Of Transformation, Hope And Sustainability. Thank You, Mr. Chair. I Therefore Move For The Approval Of This Resolution, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion Which Is Do List Counted For The Passage Of A Resolution Commending The Provincial Tourism Office Headed By Maria Josette G. Doctor For Its Crucial Role In The Provincial Government Of Northern Samar's Recent Accomplishment As Grand Prize Winner In The Atop Pearl Awards Twenty Twenty Five For Best Practices In Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category With Its Entry La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park, A Journey Of Transformation, Hope And Sustainability. Hearing No Objection, Said Motion Is Hereby Approved.
Thank You, Mr. Chair. In Line With The Earlier Resolution I Also Wish To Present Another Commendation Measure That Was Previously Referred To The Committee On Tourism, Arts And Culture. With Your Permission, Mr. Chair, May I Also Move To Withdraw From The Committee On Tourism, Arts And Culture The Proposed Resolution Entitled "Resolution Commending The Local Government Unit Of La Visarese Northern Samar Headed By Mayor Edito B. Saludaga For Its Role In The Preservation And Promotion Of The La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park Leading To The Provincial Government Of Northern Samar's Recent Accomplishment As Grand Prize Winner In The Atop Pearl Awards Twenty Twenty Five For Best Practices In Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category With Its Entry La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park, A Journey Of Transformation, Hope And Sustainability." This Resolution Which I Am Is Sponsoring Was Read During First Reading And Referred To The Committee On October Thirteen, Twenty Twenty Five. Given That This Measure Is Likewise Straight Forward In Nature May I Respectfully Move To Withdraw It From The Committee And Submit It Directly To This August Body For Deliberation And Consideration. With That, May I Move Also To Suspend The Rules To pave The Way For The Immediate Consideration Of This Resolution Of Commendation, Mr. Chair.
I Believe
The Mr. Chairman, Parliamentary Status, The Rules Is Still Suspended. However, There's A Motion That The Earlier Referal To The Committee On Tourism Be Withdrawn And Be Considered It On The Floor, Mr. Chairman.
With That Motion Do List Counted, The Same Is Withdrawn And The Proponent May Proceed With Her Presentation Of This Resolution Commending The Local Government Unit Of La Visarese Northern Samar In Relation To The Atop Pearl Awards.
Thank You, Mr. Chair. The Proposed Resolution Entitled "Resolution Commending The Local Government Unit Of La Visarese Northern Samar Headed By Mayor Edito B. Saludaga For Its Role In The Preservation And Promotion Of The La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park Leading To The Provincial Government Of Northern Samar's Recent Accomplishment As Grand Prize Winner In The Atop Pearl Awards Twenty Twenty Five For Best Practices In Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category With Its Entry La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park, A Journey Of Transformation, Hope And Sustainability. Whereas, The Provincial Government Of Northern Samar Represented By The Provincial Tourism Office Joined The Prestigious Atop Pearl Awards Twenty Twenty Five Organized By The Association Of Tourism Officers Of The Philippines. The Atop Pearl Awards Aims To Honor Exceptional Practices, Projects And Innovations In The Tourism Industry. This Annual Recognition System Celebrates The Contributions Of Local Government Units And Individuals Who Have Significantly Impacted The Tourism Sector. Whereas, One Of The Province's Eco Tourism Gems, La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park In Barangay San Isidro, La Visarese Was Featured Under The Best Practices For Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category. This Entry Not Only Emphasizes The Importance Of Preserving Mangrove Forest And The Inspiring Story Behind This Three Hundred Hectors Mangrove Forest Which Is Now Under The Care Of La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park Association Whose Journey Proved How Community Stewardship Can Transform A Natural Resource Into A Sustainable Livelihood And Thriving Tourism Site. Whereas, The Provincial Government Of Northern Samar Was A Judge As The Atop Pearl Awards Twenty Twenty Five Grand Prize Winner In The Best Practices For Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category For Its Entry La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park A Journey Of Transformation, Hope And Sustainability Besting Other Entries From Across The Country In Ceremonies Held At The Hotel Supreme Mall And Events, Baguio City On October Two, Twenty Twenty Five. Whereas, Fully Aware Aware Of Its Crucial Role In The In This Community Tourism Initiative This Sanggunian Panlalawigan Recognizes The Local Government Unit Of La Visarese Northern Samar Headed By The Honorable Edito B. Saludaga For Providing Funds For The Second Phase Of Its Development And For Forging An Invaluable Partnership With The Provincial Government Of Northern Samar Through The Provincial Tourism Office In The Preservation And Promotion Of La Laguna Eco Park. This Sanggunian Likewise Acknowledges The Significant Role Of Then-Governor Edwin Marino C. Ongchuan In Laying Its Foundation By Providing The Initial Initial Funds For Its Construction The Continued Support Of The Current Governor Harris Christopher M. Ongchuan And The Assistance Extended By Other Stakeholders Namely Former Mayor And Incumbent Vice Mayor Of La Visarese, Honorable Quintín B. Saludaga Municipal Tourism Office, L G U La Visarese Northern Samar Association Of Tourism Officers Of The Philippines Tourism Infrastructure And Enterprise Development Authority U E P Center For Environmental Studies Department Of Labor And Employment Department Of Tourism Region Eight Department Of Trade And Industry Provincial Provincial Office La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park Association And The Barangay Officials Of San Isidro, La Visarese, Northern Samar. Now Therefore, Now Therefore, Upon Motion Of This Now therefore, upon motion of this representation, Chairperson of Committee on Tourism, Culture and Arts, duly seconded this Sanggunian, resolves as it hereby resolved to commend, as it hereby commends the local government unit of Lavesares Northern Samar headed by Mayor Edito B. Saludaga for its crucial role in the preservation and promotion of La Laguna Eco Park, leading to the Provincial Government of Northern Samar's recent accomplishment as a grand prize winner in the Best Practices for Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category for its entry "La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park: A Journey of Transformation, Hope and Sustainability". I therefore move for the approval of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Before ruling on the motion, Honorable Don El Abalon is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are two resolutions that are presented before this Sanggunian for our approval. One was already approved, and the other one is now pending approval. The first one that we approved was a resolution of commendation of the Provincial Tourism Office, or in particular, the personnel of the Provincial Tourism Office headed by the Provincial Tourism Operations Officer, Josette Doctor. And the other one is a resolution of commendation of the LGU. But as I was listening, Mr. Chair, to the context of the resolution, there is one very important stakeholder that may have been left out, and that is the association. We have to remember, Mr. Chair, that this is a community-based nature park, meaning it is operated and managed and preserved by that association, not by anyone else. While it is just proper to give recognition to the Provincial Tourism Office and to the Municipal Government of Lavesares, it might as well be very necessary and more fitting to also recognize that very association that manage the Eco Park itself, Mr. Chair. And with that, with the indulgence and the indulgence of the sponsor, may we also pass a third resolution, this time for the association and with this representation as one of the sponsors, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Board Member Don Abalon. Actually, the association was mentioned here, but I definitely agree to pass another resolution of commendation for intended for the La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park Association alone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before ruling on the motion, any more comment? Particularly on the... The person, the local chief executive and the person of Mayor Edito Borjós Saludaga? Maybe we can add here the multi-talented mayor of Lavesares? If the body would agree. But, ruling on the motion, there's a motion that's duly seconded to pass a resolution commending the local government unit of Lavesares Northern Samar headed by Mayor Edito B. Saludaga for its role in the preservation and promotion of the La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park, leading to the Provincial Government of Northern Samar's recent accomplishment as grand prize winner in the Atop Pearl Awards 2025 for Best Practices in Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category, with its entry "La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park: A Journey of Transformation, Hope and Sustainability". Hearing no objection, this motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, may I move for a few minutes' suspension?
First, let's suspend it.
I'd like to pass another resolution if this August body would allow.
May I proceed?
May I pass a resolution commending the La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park... the La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park Association, LM EPA, for its crucial role in the Provincial Government of Northern Samar's recent accomplishment as grand prize winner in the Atop Pearl Awards 2025 for Best Practices in Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category with its entry "La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park: A Journey of Transformation, Hope and Sustainability". Mr. Chair, may I move for the approval of this resolution?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, before ruling on the motion, Honorable Don El Abalon is recognized.
As I have manifested earlier, I would like to join as one of the sponsors of that particular resolution, recognizing that association of La Laguna.
Duly noted. The proponent, the sponsor...
And in addition, Mr. Chair, there are members who also would like to join as sponsors. And if my understanding is correct, everybody present now are joining as co-sponsors.
With that, the motion of that proposed, the proposed resolution as sponsored by Honorable Asena Rupa Andrea Gilayu, we call sponsors all the members of this August body present in today's regular session. And ruling on the motion, there's a motion of for the passage of a resolution commending the La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park Association for its role in the preservation and promotion of the La Laguna Mangrove Eco Park, leading to the Provincial Government of Northern Samar's recent accomplishment as grand prize winner in the Atop Pearl Awards 2025 for Best Practices in Community-Based Tourism Provincial Level Category. Hearing no objection, this motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon. Thank you, Honorable Asena Rupa Andrea Gilayu, Chairperson, Committee on Tourism, Arts and Culture. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Considering that no members would like to be recognized anymore under the other matters, the next item would be proper. Therefore, I move for adjournment of a regular session until the next session. So move, Mr. Chairman.
With that motion duly seconded, today's regular session is hereby adjourned until next session. Thank you. S P Secretary, you have some reminders?
All set na man po yo.